Calling the Planning Commission meeting to order, 7 o'clock. Roll call, please. Lacy.
Chair Hedges?
Here.
Oh goodness. Vice Chair Azavito?
Here.
Commission members Askey?
Here.
DeLapp?
Here.
Jafarian?
Yes.
All present.
Thank you. Phil, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It'd be my pleasure. Please stand. And join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, every human justice for all.
Alma, you'll now read the appeal notice.
In the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition of approval of the application which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to an appeal, to appeal such determination or conditions of the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the City of Norco Clerk within 10 calendar days after the requirements for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee.
Thank you, Alma. Now, it's the public comment part. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to citycouncil@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing.
I apologize, Pat. It should have been the Planning Commission email, so it would be...
Okay, Planning Commission.
PlanningCommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Sorry.
No problem. Do we have any public comments, Lacy?
I have nothing. Matt, are there any calls? Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin.
Good evening, members of the Norco Planning Commission. My name is Cassandra Rula and I am the homeowner and resident of 4020 Mount Tobin Court in Norco. I wish to express my concerns and opposition regarding variant 2020-01, listed on tonight's agenda regarding new construction on Mount Tobin Court. This property is...
She should wait until we get to that item.
Ma'am?
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 Yes?
You would need to call in when that item is on the agenda. Right now, this is just public comments. That item's actually on the agenda, so you would need to call back at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, please. This is public comments for things that are not on the agenda. Do we have any other calls? Okay. We'll close the public comments and go on to Continued Business Items 2A. Alma?
Yes. And Chair members of the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 2A is Site Plan 2020-12, and this is a request for approval of an accessory building use permit to allow a 2,880 square foot large animal keeping shelter at 4667 Pedley Avenue, and this is located within the A1 zone. The subject parcel is a flagship parcel consisting of approximately 3.63 acres or 158,128 square feet, and it's developed, currently developed with a 2,033 square foot single story home and detached structures, and they're noted on the site plan. It was included in your application as Exhibit, let's see, Exhibit E. So, and the project site is relatively flat. It does existing historical drainages from the southeast corner to the northwest corner, and when we say flat, you know, average grade of 4% or less approximately. The site is surrounded by A120 zoning property on all sides, and as I indicated, this is a 2,880 square foot large animal keeping shelter. The shelter consists of galvanized steel posts and framing and a galvanized steel metal roof. The building is approximately eight feet at the roofie with a height of approximately 12 feet to its tallest portion. The building is proposed at the rear of the property, and yeah, we're noted on your site plan as well. As the commission is aware, these accessory buildings need to be analyzed according to our accessory building ordinance, and out of the three categories, this project has been analyzed according to the category of large animal keeping shelter. As far as the land use, it's a permitted use in the A1 zone. The maximum height of an animal keeping shelter is 10 feet at the roofie, 18 feet at the peak, and this building does not exceed it in any height. The maximum allowed size is based on the allowed animal units, based on the allowed number of animal units, which is, wow, 40 animal units on the property? They're allowed up to a structure of 10,800 square feet, so that's pretty big, and this one is substantially smaller than the maximum. The maximum lot coverage cannot be exceeded, and it's not 8% with what's existing and what's proposed. As far as setbacks, the building is required to meet the graduated setback requirement, which is dictated based on the height, and the graduated setback requirement is met, exceeded, well exceeded on all sides. Let's see, articulation, any side that exceeds 20 feet has to include doors and/or windows for function. If you notice on Exhibit E, the building elevations, the structure is open on all sides and as a function of the animal keeping structure that it is. No roll-up doors are being proposed as required in the accessory building ordinance. Let's see, interior walls, the only walls, interior wall separations that are allowed for stall enclosures and separate tack and feed rooms, and for washroom and restroom. But like I said, the structure is open on all sides, and portable horse fencing will be installed just to secure the animals, or create stalls. The required open animal keeping area is above and beyond what's required, let's see, what else here? The existing drainage pattern is proposed to be kept with the proposed structure, and as I indicated, the minimum, the required open animal keeping area is provided based on the number of animal units that's allowed, an area of approximately 23,000 square feet, and what's being shown on the site plan is way over that, because it's such a big property. And let's see, as far as the Architecture Review Board had no comments on the architecture, a part of the accessory building ordinance is that we notify property owners as a courtesy, basically, within 300 feet. We did send out the notices. We did receive a letter of opposition, which was included in your report, and most of the comments expressed on the, on the letter are civil matters. Anything that, you know, above and beyond that has been, will be addressed as far as the plant check review, and the project has been conditioned accordingly. Along with the review standards, the Planning Commission will have to determine if the proposed structure will impact the animal keeping potential of the lot, and if the building will impact the views of surrounding properties. A resolution of approval is attached to the commission decide to approve the project, and with that, I will conclude. Answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Questions of staff? We'll start with you, Danny?
No, none at all.
Janet?
No, I have none.
Mark? Phil?
Just a confirmation. It says that the property is 100% flat, and the existing historical drainage pattern will remain as is. Is that accurate?
Well, basically, what I meant to say there is that it's not going to change the existing drainage pattern. It's with the building, it's, you know, the existing drainage pattern will continue to go in the correct location as existing.
Great. Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you. I will close this. Do we have any public comments? I'll open the...
You'll still have to do the same thing. You'll have to read the notice.
Okay, I will. All right, we're going to open the public comments. No problem. Now is the time to call for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing. Okay. Thank you. I'll close the public comment area and bring it back to our commission discussion and/or...
I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve Site Plan 2020-12, requesting, requesting approval of an accessory building.
I second the motion.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member DeLapp. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yeah.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We will now go to 3A, Variance 202002.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission staff is recommending, there's a couple of issues that came up with this project, so I was recommending that we continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting. Second?
Sorry, guys. I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member Askey. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission member Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp? Jafarian? Item continued.
Thank you. We will now go to 3B.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 3B is Variance 2020-01, and this is a request for a variance from the 15-foot side yard graded access to the rear, flat pad coverage of 100, flat pad coverage, and 100-foot rear yard setback requirements of the Norco Municipal Code A1 Zone. This is necessary to allow the, or being requested, excuse me, to allow the construction of a residential home on a vacant parcel identified with the APN number of 168023008, located on the southeast corner of Mount Tobin Court and Mount Shasta Drive, and this is within the A1 zone. This is, the variance that's being requested is, I may just kind of like explain a little better, is requested to allow, as I indicated, the construction of a single-family home with no graded access to the rear of the property, required to be 15 feet, one, on one side of the home, a flat pad coverage of 65%, which is a maximum 40% of the flat pad, and a minimum rear yard setback of 58 feet, required to be 100 feet in the A1 zone. The property is currently is vacant. It was, one of those properties that was, let's see, has been in existence, it's been in existence for a while. It's, as I indicated, it's currently vacant. It consists of approximately 16,552 square feet. It's got a frontage on the east side of Mount Tobin of 58.65 feet, a frontage on the south side of Mount Shasta of 175 feet, and a maximum depth of approximately 188.46 square feet. The property is not flat. It's, there's a substantial grade difference. Approximately, there's approximately 39-foot drift difference between, let's see, over the overall grade difference between the southeast and northwest corner is approximately 39 feet, with the southeast corner being the highest point on the property. The property is surrounded by A1 zoning on all sides, and consists of a vacant parcel on the south side, and residentially developed properties on all other sides. A front yard setback of 25 feet and side yard setbacks of 5 and 15, and a rear yard setback is required for properties that are to be developed, currently developed in the A1 zone. As far as the rear yard setback of 100 feet, that went into effect in 2001, and this property was in existence several years before that. The 15-foot side yard setback must be graded to provide access to the rear of the property in a maximum lot coverage of 40% of the flat pad. The proposed home will meet the front and side yards, but not the graded access to the rear, the rear yard setback, and the maximum coverage that's required in the A1 zone. As such, the required, the proposed variants are being requested. Grading, as far as grading, grading is proposed on the property to create a buildable pad of approximately 5,000 square feet, and if you notice on your grading plan, the proposed structure, proposed home is proposed kind of in the middle to kind of balance the site and, you know, avoid a substantial amount of grading if you push it further. The pad is proposed to be located within mid-slope on the property and will create cut and fill slopes located northwest and southwest of the pad, respectively. The site plan submitted shows the footprint of the single-story home that totals approximately 2,359 square feet, which includes a home and attached garage and a front porch. Because of the limited buildable pad, the variance is requested to allow the construction on the home with no, as I indicated, with the requested variances. Per the applicant, a substantial amount of costly grading and retaining walls will be necessary, would be necessary to meet the required current development standards, and therefore, the subject variance is being requested. As the commission is aware, there's certain findings that have to be made in order to grant a variance, and those have been outlined in your staff report. The main finding for a variance is that there are special characteristics attached to the subject property which do not generally apply to other properties in the area. The subject property is vacant and undeveloped, undeveloped in the midst of properties that have been developed. So this is one of the, well, in addition to the one that's just south of it, these are a couple of the few lots within that area that are left to be constructed. The subject property was created as part of the tract map of surrounding properties, but for some reason, this one hasn't been developed, and I'm assuming because of the grading, in 1963, under the jurisdiction of the county and not the city. So, this particular lot is part of a, of tract map was, that was created as part of, under the jurisdiction of the county and not the city, and where I don't even think, let's see, I don't think not the 60-foot rear yard setback was in existence, and let alone the 100-foot. So it was created way back when, where we had the, way before we had the 60-foot rear yard setback and the 100. Let's see, this, this was well before the current 100-foot rear yard setback requirement, the flat pad requirement of 40% of the flat pad coverage, and 50-foot, 15-foot graded side yard access to the rear property. The lot is unique in that the current development standards that apply, because the lot is vacant, which were not in effect when the lot was created, nor when surrounding properties were developed. In other words, the existing properties developed within the same tract were developed under different standards, but because this one remains vacant, the current standards apply, so therefore, you know, we have the need for the variance. More grading than is proposed would be required to comply with current standards. And the other, the second finding grading of the variance is necessary to avoid practical difficulty, undue hardship, or result inconsistent with the general purpose of the zoning code. The commission will have to determine if this variance can be determined to be necessary to avoid practical difficulty and undue hardship. Number three, granting of the variance will not result in material damage or prejudice to all the properties in the vicinity, nor be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and this is again, a finding that's made at the discretion of the Planning Commission, again centered around the number one finding, which, based on the uniqueness of this property and its, you know, history. Now, let's see. And lastly, granting of the variance will not be contrary or detrimental to the general plan. This is an A1 zone property. Residential use is consistent with the general plan and allowed per the zoning designation of A1. And lastly, the commission has directed staff to make the final additional finding prior to granting of the variance. Granting of the variance will not limit animal keeping on the subject lot. Based on the size of the property, three animal units would be allowed. There is no specific size for animal keeping in the approval of a variance. In this case, there are limitations on animal keeping, but not because of the proposed variance, but because of the existing topography of the property. With that, we did, I believe, we had, we did send out notices to property owners within a 300-foot radius, and let's see, okay, and this is what you have on the dais with respect to the notice requirements. A resolution of approval has been attached, said the commission desired to approve this variance, and with that, I will conclude and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Phil, questions of staff? Mark?
Yeah, Alma, I've got a couple. In relation to the standards that the other properties were built to, if we grant the variance, would it, would this property comply with the other standards that the other adjacent properties were built to?
Well, the, the difficulty with that is that the lot was created before the incorporation of the city, so what was there before is kind of hard to determine, but before the 60-foot rear yard setback, there was 100 feet before 60, before 100, it was 60, and before 60, it was 30. So, if it was 30 of what they were subject to, I don't know that for a fact, because again, this lot was created and surrounding properties were developed before, so. But just to give you a little history of the transition, it went, the rear yard setback in the A1 zone at one time was 30 feet, then it went up to 60, then it went, went up to 100, so...
I guess what I, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is if we grant this variance, will this property have a different aspect to it than the other properties in terms of how they were built on their lots?
Well, the, let's see, yes, in the sense that the current development standards apply, which did not apply to the surrounding properties, and the topography for some of this, you know, the surrounding properties was, is not, was not substantially prohibitive of development.
But in terms of the setbacks?
Yeah.
I mean, specifically the setbacks that they're asking for the variance for?
I, and again, I don't know the answer to, yeah.
My other question though is, if I understand this correctly, they're leveling enough to put a house?
Correct.
On, but they're not leveling anything for extra for animal keeping, right?
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay. But they could. They're just choosing not to.
So there's, and I can have engineering kind of chime in on this, there's a substantial amount of rock in that area?
Rock.
Yeah, extremely, a lot of, a lot of rock in that area, so that kind of, that also creates a uniqueness to the property. It would be, would be, I don't know.
Cost prohibitive.
Would a future owner be able to create an animal keeping area if they so desired?
A lot of money.
It's extremely expensive, and instead of eight, instead of six to seven-foot walls, you'd be looking at 10, 15-foot walls. Just the cost of those is extraordinary.
Or a smaller house. Right? Yeah. Okay. That's all my questions.
Janet, questions of staff?
Um...
Janet, what's going on?
So, would it be fair to say, I mean, because I went and looked, physically looked at the lot, and then, you know, rightfully so, probably remained this way for a very long time because of the rocks and being expensive. So, if they were to, so basically, it's cost prohibitive to have the correct variance at this point in time? They would have to build a retaining wall and fill with dirt in order to have it? Is that why they're asking for the variance?
Yeah, or, you know, to meet the 100-foot, there, it's right now, the proposed is about approximately 58 feet minimum, so they would have to push the house further, further closer to the, to the front?
To the front.
And that would require more fill at the front, correct?
It's already nine feet high.
For earthwork quantities, which would be money.
What is the nine feet difference?
Yeah.
All right, all ready.
Okay, thank you.
Danny, questions of staff?
Yeah. Didn't this come in front of us a couple of years ago? I remember us having this lot.
Not this particular lot. It was a, it was a different one. It was a different one in the same area, but it wasn't this one.
Really? I thought it was this one. Well, I've heard of it, all of that. Which person was saying it was, it got their view as, which way is the house that's causing the view on the person that could...
Um, this one here.
Okay. No, I'm done.
Okay, thanks. We'll close this, and we'll go back to the public hearing, and I will read my message. Open the public hearing. Public comment. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing.
Ready, Pat? Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin.
One.
Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin.
Good evening, members of Norco Planning Commission. My name is Cassandra Rula and I am the homeowner and resident of 4020 Mount Tobin Court in Norco. I wish to express my concerns and opposition regarding... I wish to express my concerns and opposition regarding variance 2020-01 Mendez, listed in tonight's agenda regarding new construction on Mount Tobin Court. This property is directly in front of my property. I oppose this variance and build because I am very concerned that the property will be unsafe after disturbing the earth's lands on the lot to build on. As you can see in the pictures of the property, there are many large boulders on this lot and nowhere in the plans to build are boulders to be removed. This neighborhood tends to flood when it rains. My concern is that the safety and stability of those boulders are compromised due to cutting into the lot, and therefore, my home and family are in direct harm of those boulders and any other dirt and debris that is compromised because of this build. Also, I have a concern that this property is not guaranteed to not be a two-story structure in which would obstruct our view. Also, what will the building process do to all of our horses and other animals in the neighborhood? I'm concerned that the noise and chaos of this build would put a lot of stress on our neighborhood's animals. One of the biggest reasons my husband and I bought our home was because we didn't have any home directly in front of ours. We truly enjoy the view of this lot and consider it to be a beautiful asset to our neighborhood and call the sex. I ask that this committee deny the variance and deny building on this property due to the fact that it compromises the safety of my home, property, and most importantly, my family if those boulders are not removed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have no emails.
All right, do we have the resident here? Would you like to speak? Please come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Edgar Mendez, the owner of the lot, me and my dad. And our plan is to build my future home right here at Norco. There was a question about animal keeping. I love animals myself. There is a place at the top, where later on, we could grade and have some space for animal keeping as well. The reason the house is, you mentioned smaller house. I like big family, which I also believe is very important to have and enough room for the family as well. As for the boulders, to, in respect to that, we plan to remove them safely when we do our grading and have a company that's capable of doing that, to have safety as our main concern, because at the end of the day, we all want to go back home to our family and keep everybody safe in the neighborhood. And for the noise, we'll try to keep it down as much as possible. It is construction. I do believe constructing in this piece of land will bring the home values up as well, just as well as getting everything developed and constructing a nice residential home. If there's any questions, I would like to answer.
Hang on a second. Any questions? Mark? Janet?
No, no questions.
None.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more calls, we'll end the public hearing portion and come back to us. Discussion, Danny?
No, it will be noisy, definitely for a period of time. Puddings, block wall. No, I don't see anything. I think it's sad to have a piece of property just sit there and can't be used. It's always the case too, a lot of times, I hate to say it, people move in and they don't want anybody else around them. And that's not the case. Everybody has the opportunity in, in America to be able to do their dream. And if it's, you know, legally to put it on there, I, I don't see no trouble at all, you know. I think, I'm in construction myself, and boy, you've got one big chore to do, get a house in there. I'd like to come by and just watch. Anyway, that's it.
Janet, discussion?
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that this lot, you know, with the boulders and, I mean, it'd be very, very expensive to create a lot that would have some substantial animal keeping facilities. But, you know, for a home and have a nice-sized lot for a home, I think, I think that it's suitable.
Mark? Mark? Yeah?
Yeah, it seems like most of the issues that have been raised, while I'm sure legitimate in people's minds, deal with the fact that they have their own houses next to a vacant lot and they don't want anything built on that lot, but that's not right. I mean, that's not fair. The, I do think, sir, you're going to have some, some winning over to do of your neighbors. But, but I, and by the way, I've learned that goats like rocky slope. I have four of them now, and they like the rocks. Just saying. That's all.
Phil?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the aerial, and driving it is a little different than looking at the aerial. I look at the aerial, and this is a bunch of, in my opinion, bad lots. These are, like, every single one of them is a variance. There's not a single one here that I would go, hey, that one, we can make it comply. You'd have to buy two lots to make it comply with the code. And thank you, Alma, for the, giving us a little insight into what it was like in 1963. I know you weren't even born then, but that's fine. I look at this, and I, and I look at some of the other houses on the aerial, and, and as I said, I couldn't see it when I drove by, but I look at the aerial and I see everybody's jammed in as close as they can to try to make it right. And then they're trying their best. And I think, so anybody who's willing to buy that piece of property and has the bravery and cash to go ahead and do it, I don't see a particular problem.
Yeah, I kind of feel that this is the reason that there are variances for these type of lots, and it certainly is unique, although there is a bunch of odd properties right here. But this has to be what a variance is for, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve variance 2020-01.
I second the motion.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member DeLapp. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now go, do you need any, any direction on 4A or it has been continued? Do we have to? Yeah, this, I certainly cannot.
Yeah, can I get a motion in a second to continue the item off calendar?
Yep, let's go ahead and, I'd like to make a motion to move this off calendar.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member Askey. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion passed to continue off calendar.
All right, now we come down to five. Planning Commission, staff communications, any requests for items? I know we haven't had any committees, so I guess with that, we're done. The end. The end.
Who's going to entertain us for a little bit longer?